Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the afternoon of Monday, April the 17th. I'll note for the record that all of our council is present. Item one on our agenda is to review the agenda we have for tonight's council meeting. Counsel, I know we just went over this document a few days ago, but are there any additional questions from council meetings related to tonight's agenda? Mr. Brady, anything else from staff for tonight's meeting?
We had our presentation.
Okay. Great. If there are no questions about tonight's agenda, then we'll move on to item 2A of this agenda, which is a presentation and to provide direction on the Energy Resources Department budget. I think we get a double dose of Scott Boucher this afternoon, don't we? It's always a good thing. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Scott Boucher, and I am the Energy and Sustainability Director at the City of Mesa. Today, Mayor, as you noted, there's two presentations today. So first will be Energy Resources, and then we'll follow it up with Environmental and Sustainability, and some updates on the Climate Action Plan. So first, and I'm joined today by John Petroff, and Tony Kadorin had texted me. He's running just a couple of minutes late. He'll be here in just a moment. So first, we'll start with our public purpose, which is to provide safe, reliable, and affordable electric and gas utility service to our customers. And as we go through the presentation, I think you'll see we've kind of come back to this public purpose. So with the next slide, we have priorities and objectives. The three of them there stabilize and reduce supply costs. And this goes for both utilities, but we will go into, I know that there's been questions, we had some discussion even last week, about local generation of electric and even with natural gas. And we do have some slides later on in the presentation that we'll go into that. And then, meeting our customers' needs, both with staffing and equipment. So we're seeing growth, we're seeing a lot of growth in the natural gas utility, especially in the Magma area. I was actually just down there last week on a ride along and was amazed to see the number of houses that are coming out of the ground in Queen Creek and Pinal County. And so as we're trying to keep up with that growth, the growth, there are staffing needs that we have, both staff and equipment. And then, as you, everybody sees on a daily basis in the downtown, the growth that's happening here within our electric service area, we also have some needs in that area. Then also, it's providing opportunities for staff within the department. So when you think about the two utilities that we have, the natural gas and the electric utility, most folks would think, you know, you typically equate that with APS, SRP, Southwest Gas. It's unusual for a municipality to have these two. What I've learned is we're going through and getting to know the department better, really it is important to hire good folks, to be able to get them trained up, and then be able to promote from within. This is an area, it's very unique, some of these positions are very technical, and so having people onboard that understand the way that we do business, understand the Mesa way, is very important for the health of the department and the utilities. So we'll go into some of our performance metrics. First is blue-stake accuracy. So this is how often there are at-fault damages that happen. So in other words, that there's damage that happens to one of the utilities that we mark. And the Energy Resources Department, I should note, marks utility, marks all of the utilities for the city. So we're not just marking natural gas and electric, stormwater, water, the sewer services that you have, even the wiring that's around the intersections for transportation and stuff that we're marking. This is a very busy group, especially right now with the fiber project that's happening to bring fiber to all of the homes in Mesa. Sometimes you will see, it almost looks like a gang of taggers kind of out there, where you'll see five or six people that are out marking all of the utilities in a neighborhood. And typically, you'll see that along with a sign that says one of those fiber providers is coming to the neighborhood. And that's what we're doing, is marking all of those utilities before they come out there. The next is our gas emergency response. So this is if we get a call that somebody smells gas, maybe there is a leak that's happening within the system. How long does it take us to respond to those calls? Right now, we have two folks that are on call 24/7/365 to respond to these issues, and our goal is to get there in less than 30 minutes. And you do see that, for the most part, we do meet that goal, although we are starting to see some of those outer times, the, you know, 20 minutes plus that are starting to grow a little bit. And so that's just an early indicator for us, maybe, in what we're seeing as far as number of calls that we're getting, and some staffing needs that we might have. The last one is electric outage durations, and these are durations which we have, or outages that we have some control over. And our goal here is obviously to have the least amount of outages that we can. And the electric utility, really, it's been another part that I've been impressed that they're able to get the electric backup relatively quickly, typically less than an hour that people are out when we do have outages. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tony Kadorin, who's going to talk to us more about the Climate Action Plan progress that we've made in the department.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So we view the electric utility really as a critical piece of the city making progress on the Climate Action Plan, and so we just wanted to highlight a few projects that we've made project, progress on recently. Our customer-owned solar program, which is the program where our customers can put solar on their house, that's been growing very rapidly. We're now at 149 customers, 1.7 megawatts, that's grown. 21 customers that we added this fiscal year. We're always working with customers to add solar, and we're also working on a very large commercial customer who's adding a large installation at their business. Regarding our residential electric vehicle time of use rate, that began on January 1st of this year, but we rolled it out very slowly because we're waiting for the AMI program to deploy, as well as waiting for our business processes to make sure that we're ready to handle that demand. And so we've held back on a large push as we waited for that, but we're beginning our social media campaign in May to bring more customers onto that rate. And so we added our first customer this month, worked out great, so we're going to look to add more in May now.
I'm sorry. Before you move on, can you kind of define what electric vehicle time of use is? Are we talking about our own fleet of vehicles, or are we talking about other utilization just generally in our service area? I don't quite follow.
Sure. Mayor, so that's a rate that we developed a little while ago that rolled down in January for specifically our residential customers. So those customers that have a Level 2 or even a Level 1 charger at their home who want to charge their vehicle, we want to make sure that they're charging their vehicle off of peak hours. Because if everybody hops on and charges their electric vehicle at peak hours, we're going to have problems. So what it does is it creates a super-off-peak rate from 11:00 p.m. through 5:00 a.m. that's very inexpensive, that represents the electric rates during that time period. And so what we're hoping is that our electric vehicle owners, residential electric vehicle owners, will use that rate to not only lower their fuel costs for their vehicles, but also to keep their charging during those hours when it's not going to be a challenge for us.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
And we'll do the same as far as our electric fleet that we house in the utility, the electric area.
Yes, we're looking to develop that rate. It hasn't been developed yet, but we're going to be looking to do that because there's that same value of making sure that our fleet EVs charge during off-peak hours.
And you mentioned AMI program? What is AMI?
AMI.
AMI. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Smart Meter Program.
So just to beat a dead horse there, if you're an electric vehicle user in our service area, we would encourage you not to plug in your vehicle when you get home from work, but rather to plug it in when you go to bed.
Yeah. So yes, that's the basics of it. As I understand it, I don't have an electric vehicle, but we'd encourage them to either program their vehicle's app or their charger's app.
Oh, I get it.
There's an app you can actually use to set when that charging starts, or you can program it into the actual charger itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course, unless you're connected to a solar panel.
Not sure. I'll look into that.
We try to be nice to the people that present here, Mr. Brady.
I'm used to it.
Well, yeah, we have an electric charging station underneath our solar panels.
We do.
In the city parking lot.
We do.
Very proud of that.
On peak?
That's what I was asking. On peak, because we're getting up in the solar, so as long as it's not cloudy outside.
All right. Our demand response program, we presented that last Thursday, and you think that'll be good savings for all of our customers by avoiding high-peak on-price, high-priced on-peak electricity. Something we're bringing to you for the first time today here is a purchase that we're negotiating with SRP for 16 megawatts of renewable energy. So this purchase will represent about 15% of our annual energy, and it'll be a huge step forward for Mesa in terms of Climate Action Plan progress. So working with SRP on that, nothing has been signed yet, but we're really encouraged by this, so really excited about it.
Mr. Brady.
Is this an addition? I know a couple of years ago, we were partnering with SRP for their plant in Pinal County. Is this an addition amount to that? I think it was like 5% or?
Yeah, you got it right.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, it is in addition to that. So that was a sustainable energy offer that they offered to their larger electric customers within the SRP service area. This is different in that it's two utilities who are coming to this agreement. So this is energy that will be delivered to Pinnacle Peak is where the City of Mesa will take possession of it. It will go to Rogers, and then we'll distribute it through our electric utility. So it's separate in that this is a utility-to-utility deal as opposed to a utility-to-customer deal.
Sometimes when we use the word "us," it can be either as the customer.
Yes.
Of an SRP customer, or it can be us as the utility that's acquiring power for our customers.
Customers. Which we are one of our customers, too. So yeah. So this is a little bit different than that deal, but it is with SRP for solar.
Is it solar? You said it's solar?
Yeah. So what they're, what it is, is, and Tony, correct me if I say something that is incorrect, it's a firm energy deal. So the energy will be delivered to a particular place, which will be Pinnacle Peak is where we'll take possession of it. That energy will be followed by what's called renewable energy credits, which validates them and gives us the environmental attributes associated with the energy. So it's a little bit different that it's not tied specifically to, I believe, the one with the sustainable energy offer was Saint Solar, so it was tied to a specific project. This energy deal isn't tied necessarily to a specific solar project, but it has the renewable energy credits behind it. So it's a firm deal for energy that is then backed with the environmental attributes.
Ms. Duff.
Before we get off the slide, I wanted to go back to the customer solar. Do we use any service that provides streamlined permitting? Or I'm familiar with like Soul Smart, and they are no cost?
No, this has been done through just our customers. And we do have an internal group who will help customers through the process of what they need to do with the electric utility, but it was not with any other third-party advertising or having other sorts of incentives offered.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
We've looked at a few of those programs, just with, in Mesa not needing a solar permit and us having basically all the elements to put together these solar packages within Mesa, we didn't see much value to using something like that. But we are, whenever we hear word of something like that, we do look at using them. And we're trying to track what's the, what's the, you know, not delay, but what's the actual time period from when we first receive that first inquiry from a solar customer to when they're energized? We're trying to track that as well, and we feel our progress on that is pretty comparable to SRP and APS. So a lot of the projects, sometimes they'll get sidetracked by things other than Mesa, so it's hard to pinpoint an exact time period. But when there's process efficiency improvement, things like that, we do look at them very seriously. And then the last thing I want to highlight on this slide is, as you've all seen, we've gone through our first round of downtown solar here in the city plaza area. We're looking at another round of solar here for downtown Mesa as well, and I'll go into that a little bit in the next slide. And so when we were experiencing challenges in the electric markets, and we presented to you in spring of 2021, one of the conclusions from that effort was that we really need to focus on generating our own power, generating power locally. And so we wanted to bring that to you as well to discuss what we're working on. As I mentioned, we have the first rollout of downtown solar, that's 800 kilowatts here in the city plaza. And so at the bottom of the left-hand side, you'll see 2A and 2B. There's a slight typo on 2A, it's actually 1.8 megawatts, but combined between the four sites in 2A and the fifth site in 2B, that'll be 2.3 megawatts of solar, effectively tripling or a little bit more of the amount of solar here in downtown Mesa, which will be great. That's all very, you know, locally generated renewable power that also provides the benefit of placemaking and providing shade in downtown Mesa. And so we're really looking for those co-benefits with these projects that we're putting together, and those are some that we're excited for. Those are in the final stages of putting together the RFP for it, so we see that RFP going out very shortly. And then the microgrid at the PD campus will be one of the first steps towards leveraging our natural gas utility to generate our own electricity with efficient natural gas generators. A microgrid is a self-supporting smaller section of the grid. And so we have our overall service territory, and what we're going to do is create a smaller section of that grid, which can be powered by three natural gas generators, about 3 megawatts. And so if there's a larger issue on the grid where power is lost in the region or in Mesa's service territory, those generators will be brought up to speed, and they'll support the facilities within the PD campus to keep them in power during these critical events. And so we're excited about that. And then during normal times, when there's no outage, we can use those generators just to offset our peak electricity purchases. So we kind of view it as the only backup generator that'll be able to pay for itself because during normal times, it's saving our customers money by avoiding peak market purchases.
So then it wouldn't be utilized just during outages? It would be utilized all day, every day, or how often?
No, we estimate anywhere between 2,000 and 6,000 hours a year. So during the summer, probably 16 hours a day. During the winter and off-peak days, significantly less.
So Tony, it's a calculation, right?
It is.
That you're going to run. So he'll know what the cost of traditional electric sourcing power is, and then he'll know what it would be to flip on the microgrid here to generate the natural gas. So it's be able to offset those times when it exceeds that cost. So yeah, it's great for emergency, but it also kind of will help mitigate against those higher peaks on energy costs. Is that?
Exactly. So we'll be looking at the day-ahead market, so the market tomorrow, and we'll see what's the natural gas cost and the cost to turn that into electricity. Let's say it's $50. And if the price of power tomorrow is trading for $100, we'll turn on the generators and avoid that $100 power.
So if that works at that scale, would it not also work at a larger scale? I mean, should we look at doing more of these?
Yeah, we think so. And so on the right side of the slide, we have two of those projects where we're thinking about exactly that. So one more microgrid, this one at the district cooling campus. And so those are more critical facilities where we could also stand to keep power up there during critical hours when there's an outage on the grid. And so these are both in evaluation stages. And then the other thing that we wanted to bring up that I think we're mentioning for the first time is that the city purchased a piece of real estate near the Rogers substation. We're evaluating what to do there. And one of the options we think is large-scale generation, larger than the microgrids, or large-scale storage. The parcel's industrial in nature, it's surrounded by power lines, substation equipment, so we feel it'd be an ideal fit for something like this. You know, solar continues to be the cheapest form of generation that we can buy, but we can only buy so much of it. And in order to buy more of that and fit more inexpensive power in our portfolio, we need to install either fast-ramping natural gas or storage to support that. So we're walking through the study portion of this in a data-driven and analytical manner to make the best decision possible here, but it's a very big decision, so we want to walk through it carefully.
As I've indicated earlier, and I know Mr. Freeman at least, and I know others agree, I think it makes sense to me that we pursue generation of electricity, just the less, one of the lessons we've learned over the last couple of years is that we really are at the mercy of those who do produce electricity. And so it seems like a good solution.
And we're in the natural gas business.
I'm sorry?
And we're in the natural gas business.
Right.
So we have that, you know, part of the business for us, too, to supply the natural gas to these generators.
Well, I'll just weigh in. You know, this just leverages our utility, our scale of utilities, and augments the power that we can generate, and I think that's very important. You know, we, we're in the utility business, right? And so it just seems natural that now we need to look forward. But when we look at these projects and building them out, even the gas-powered generation and the battery storage, if you go with that, we're looking at least to 18 to maybe two years away, at least at a minimum, right, Tony?
Yeah, I think that's a fair estimate, yeah.
And it could be a tad longer. But one of the things I just wanted to make, and I made some notes here, but I'm sure you've analyzed the percent of growth in both of our utilities so that we can be predicting, you know, our future infrastructure growth. And then I look at hiring, you know, some of your metrics here is about hiring, because I know other utilities like to poach our personnel because they may pay a little bit more. But I did see something unusual, that there was some electrical energy trading telephone poles now at the Center Street Yard recently put up, right?
They've been there.
Have they been there a while?
They've been there for a while.
Well, I have my bladers on because...
They've actually been there long enough that we have to replace them, so we're trying to figure out exactly what we need to do with those.
I mean, I've been by there six times today, and I just noticed. But I mean, to your point, though, the metrics for our power purchases, you know, and how we can offset those power purchases and control our own destiny with that is very important because we have the infrastructure to do that, but we have to plan ahead to do that. And I think battery storage is a critical component because, yeah, we can, you can't make too much solar because you have to have a place to store it. And so I think that's the future. I do have some concerns about some battery storage because there has been, as you know, battery fires in Surprise, as well as Chandler, that knocked out a lot. And then to the SRP, they're building their own solar sites now, and they're moving forward with that. And so I think that's where some of our purchases might be coming from. And then even that is in the, not even built yet, so they're still out, right? Couple of years, Tony?
They are. I forget what the start date we were discussing, but they were, SRP's been willing to discuss a very aggressive start date with us, so we appreciate them moving on that for us because we understand that resources aren't coming online as fast as anybody wants them to be.
Yeah. And with the deal that we have for that 16 megawatts, they're looking at, we're looking at beginning of January of '25. Or, yeah, '25.
To be producing power.
Are these the ones that, are these the ones that are in the Citrus Grove, or this outside of that?
No. This is, this is the one that we had just discussed that will be a firm power purchase.
Oh, right. But we're also looking at the partnership with them on the solar panels.
Yes. So that was the next as we go through. So with, we have a MOU, we were supposed to actually present Thursday to the SAC Committee, but we got delayed, but we'll come back to. So there is an MOU, a memorandum of understanding with SRP to do sustainability initiatives. And the biomass project that you saw that came forward from Water Resources and actually is in the environmental and sustainability presentation today is one of the projects out of there, and that's been paired up with this solar project that we're discussing today also. So those are the two big projects that are coming out of the memorandum of understanding. Once we have those complete, then we're going to move on to Falcon Field and see what...
And the Falcon Field will provide solar directly to city, to credit city usage?
That's the plan. We have not gotten into those conversations yet with SRP, but we'd have to have them as a partner in order to get that.
Trading power.
We're losing the Citrus Grove, right? We just, you know, and so we've, this is, we think a great opportunity to put up the solar panels with SRP in that buffer area for the airport, and then be able to use that to offset our own energy costs, too.
Well, I just think moving forward, you know, the gas power generation, you know, you can turn the switch, and in 10 minutes, it's producing power for you. And that's critically important to offset some of the higher, when you have to buy megawatts of power, and California wants some, and I know the project sells hundreds of megawatts to California annually for a tidy sum, and so we should be able to produce our own power for that. So, no, I applaud you, and I know you're halfway through, or a little more than halfway through, so I'm going to stop there.
Ms. Duff.
I appreciate that we're doing this microgrid for resiliency and, you know, self-reliance and these things, but I do caution, if we do a lot of expansion in this, we have to put it in line with our sustainability goals because the natural gas is still burning fossil fuels. So yes, we need it for resiliency and support and our growing everything, but we have to balance that also where our growth opportunities that meet our sustainability goals. So I just wanted to kind of put that in as a balancing comment.
And just to build on it a little bit, Tony, on Thursday, actually, was walking through the models that he has put together on this. And really, it becomes, we're going to have some choices. There's kind of different pieces to the puzzle. You've got solar, you've got batteries, and you've got natural gas. And then addition, we have our baseload contracts that we have purchases for. And it's trying to find what is the best combination of those three. And really, even when you talk to SRP and they look at natural gas generation as one of the keys, either natural gas generation or battery storage is the key for them to expand their solar capabilities. Because there's just times when solar, you know, as the sun starts to go down and we all go home and turn everything on, it's meeting that demand in between. And so that's the key component to get back again to that reliable utility. And that's where you'll see in the slide, it says "understudy," and that's what we're doing, and we'll come back to council, obviously, before anything. It's finalized with kind of that research that we've done and recommendations on how we would move forward.
I just want, I agree. Natural gas is not renewable energy, but I think it is the, until we develop the sustainable technology to avoid it, I think it is how you bridge the gap. And I think that gap will be there for a generation or more.
Well, generation, our generators today that we use to back up these essential facilities, a lot of them, I think, have diesel or some other very toxic fuel, and they have to be, I don't know what our schedule is, but regularly fired up just to make sure that they'll be available when we need them. So if you're not, you know, from just an operational standpoint, having this constant availability of the natural gas to generate power for backup is, that's my first box I have to check off, right? Because we got to make sure these critical facilities run up, and then try to do it in a sustainable way. And so it is a balancing act throughout the whole thing.
And we recognize on the gas side as well, when it comes to climate action, we have to be on the forefront of things. And so we have worked on two pilot projects, which we feel are pretty groundbreaking with a company called Project Canary. They're both very advanced methane detection projects. One is a stationary project, meaning it's at a stationary facility, one of our gate stations, where we have four very sensitive methane detectors at the station along with the infrared camera that can actually see natural gas emissions. So if a valve or a fitting at these stations starts leaking, we can see it live on a camera, and it'll show up on the sensors. The camera also picks up human intrusions, so we're able to double the use case there and detect any entrances into our critical facilities. And we're also testing the ability to detect ice buildup on regulators, which is actually a problem in Arizona, believe it or not. But if these facilities ice up, they have a tendency to kind of lock up. It's not a good thing. So we're doing pretty interesting things there, and we're one of the first in the country to do that. On the mobile pilot project with Project Canary, we've outfitted two of our solid waste vehicles with methane-detecting equipment. So by federal code, we're required to survey our business districts once a year for leaks, whereas now we're looking to have, you know, these trucks which drive the city almost every day of the year go out and enact as our leak-detection equipment almost every day of the year. So we're hoping for big results with that. There are a lot of challenges. There are a lot of challenges. We're the first, like I said, first in the country to do this. So we're learning a lot how to do it and how not to do it, but we're really excited about that. Additionally, our flare-to-fuel project, which I'm sure you'll hear more about as we continue to make progress on that, that'll be able to cover 20% of the city's natural gas usage with renewable natural gas on a yearly basis. And on top of that, we're looking to develop more renewable natural gas projects. So we recognize that this is going to be an important piece to our climate action plan, and we're pursuing that as aggressively as we can.
No, Scott, that C Mar, that, that second one is coming up for the council soon.
Yeah, GMP number two will be coming to council on May 1st.
Why don't you talk to us a little bit about that? Because that's their next agenda after tonight.
Yeah, so that project is, and we have, in the next presentation, I actually have a slide that lays out the whole flare-to-fuel, food-to-energy, because we have some funding for next year on that one, too.
So this is right after I said, natural gas is not a renewable source of energy, and on the other hand, we are producing it on a daily basis.
There are renewable sources of natural gas, yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So here's an overview of our department expenditure summary. I'll start with the electric side. What you're seeing in year-end actuals '21, '22, and then the year-end estimate for '22, '23 are some savings compared to budget. Those are mostly due to staff working on the downtown development projects as opposed to operations and maintenance work. So that's, we're seeing that savings on the operations side. Moving on to the gas side, in the first column for gas business development, you'll see there's a 1.3 million versus the 300,000 for the rest of the, rest of the columns. That was just an accounting adjustment for some work done out at the, with El Paso at one of our gate stations. So that, that expense actually took place in prior years. On the gas systems operations side, this year we purchased a generator to replace one of the mobile generators that is going to the CNG station for emergency backup for the solid waste trucks. So that's about $400,000 purchase this year. In the locating side, as we talked about earlier, for the fiber-to-the-home project, you're seeing increased expenses in '22, '23, and '23, '24. That's for additional staff and temporaries to, to accommodate the work done for the fiber project. And then on the gas system maintenance side, in '22, '23, and '23, '24, the, the rising cost there is mostly due to inflation affecting the fuel costs for our fleet and material and supply costs. And then moving on to the energy supply costs, that's, those are those pass-through costs to our customers for the cost of electricity and natural gas, and the changes year to year.
And then some of the budget adjustments that we have is, one of them is for utility service workers. So I talked a little bit about the amount of growth that we're seeing, especially down in the Magma area. This will help us with our standby. So right now, we've actually, the folks that are on standby, they can be on call, it was every three weeks on a rotating schedule, or every fourth week, they'd be off for three and on, and they can be called 10-plus times in a week. So we are seeing some burnout with these folks. We've actually reduced it down to two call-out areas so they can have a longer time in between being on call, but of course, they are going to see more calls as that happens. So this would give us an ability to get more of those folks on call and extend that, that rotation a bit, and while still being able to meet those metrics of having that 30% call-out, which we think will help tremendously with employee morale. And then as the AMI project gets started, we will be using some of this staff to do meter exchanges on the AMI project. We were working with the contractor, but found it was, we had difficulty of them having folks that could pass our training and keep their qualifications, and so we have found that it's easier, it's going to be easier for us to be able to do that work in-house, and we'll be able to keep these folks busy. Again, going towards that safe and reliable and affordable utility. The next one is, again, supporting community needs and growth, is a valve crew leader. Currently, we have three maintenance areas that we maintain the valves. Now, anytime that there is, if there's a gas leak that we need to go in and then fix that gas leak, many times we need to go to these valves to be able to turn them off to control the flow of gas that's happening. So it's a key component. It's also a regulatory component that we exercise these valves, and this will give us an ability to add another sector in to keep up with the growth that we've seen both in East Mesa and in the Magma area so that we can maintain the regulatory requirements, but also in addition to that, making sure that we're able to affect the least amount of people when there are outages that happen because we have those valves are, are being serviced and they're ready to, to be used. We also have gas field workers, so these are the folks that are in the field and help to install service lines, main lines that are going to subdivisions. Right now, we have crews that are working overtime on Fridays and Saturdays. Almost every Friday and Saturday, we have crews that are working overtime, trying to keep up with that demand that's happening down in Magma. We also have job order contracts in place, that we have crews, private crews that are doing this work, and so this is an ability for us to add staff, again, to try and keep up with the demand that we have. Also, there's just day-to-day work that needs to happen, maintenance work that needs to happen. This will help us be able to keep up with that. So it's both keeping up with the demand of new construction, but as that new construction obviously comes on board, we need to make sure that we're maintaining the system that we have already. And then lastly, as an AMI data analyst, this is the same as what had been presented also with Water Resources, as we have the AMI project in place and we're getting all of this data related to our customers and their usage, this is going to be a position that will help us to be able to make some of those decisions, I think, that we were having conversations about earlier as far as, you know, local production. In addition to that, I'm excited, we'll talk a little bit about the performance metrics associated with the Climate Action Plan, but I'm excited to have this data analyst who's going to be able to see that energy usage, which is a key component to what we do with the Climate Action Plan, and being able to have somebody who's able to look in detail and run scenarios and, and measure our progress that we're making towards our aspirational goals. So with that, those are the budget adjustments, and there's a summary page that we have, and that's the end of our presentation. We can take any other questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. Council, any additional questions before we move on to the next presentation?
I have a couple, I have a couple of short ones. So on the PD grid, that's going to be natural gas generation.
The microgrid?
Microgrid, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And currently, we have a unit there already, or no?
I believe it is a diesel emergency backup-
The backup generator, like 500 KW or something?
Yeah, and those generators are really different. They are only intended, they can only be used, they're permitted only to be used in emergency situations, so it has to be short duration, could not be used for the type of project that we're looking at with the microgrid.
And tell me about an emergency situation, what would that entail?
Would be like a power outage to keep the critical lights on within the facility.
Keep the detention center running, keep the whole operations going, so it'll charge up.
And then on the AMI, remind us maybe the install time over how long and how many units you'll be installing?
Well, the, the install time, right now, we're a little behind schedule because we don't have all of the meters that are necessary for us to get started. So we're still waiting for meters to arrive, because the idea that we don't want to get started on this project and then have to stop because we don't have enough supply. So right now, we're waiting on that supply to arrive. I believe total install goes out, it's several years, four, five years, that that's going to go out before it's complete.
All right, just wondering if you have the meters?
Yeah, no, we still don't have all of them. We have some, they are coming in, but we do not have all of the meters that we need quite yet.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Frankie?
Do we, did we expend out all the stimulus fund, or the COVID relief funds that went to the gap that we had with high costs?
Yep, good question. So Mayor Vice Mayor, there's two pots, and we'll let you all answer to it. So there was, we did have CARES dollars, right, that we used to help utility assistance, but then when we came to the ARPA dollars, remember, we had just hit that huge cost of the, the Texas, you know, spike of gas? And so we've tried to mitigate against that spike in the specific area of that part of the utility. And we've spread it out, is, is it almost been two years we've been able to apply those dollars? I think now it's funny, what's, what's the update on that?
Yeah, Mayor Vice Mayor, so we initially thought we would get through maybe one or two summers with that, so I believe we started summer of 2021. We got through '21, we got through '22, and so I believe now we're scheduled to actually run that all the way through November of 2024. So it's been progressively extended as SRP has raised their rates, it's become easier for us to be competitive with those now higher rates. And with SRP again raising rates here very soon, we may be able to stretch the dollars out a little more.
So I heard three years?
2023.
Sorry, 2023, sorry, sorry. But then that helps us kind of bend that curve where we were going to see that spike that we're going to have to, remember, we, I can't, we had incurred millions of dollars, right, of, of payments for the, the gas because of the spike of the winter freezes, right?
I'm sorry, it's, it was on the electric side.
Electric side, sorry, I said gas. Electric side, so that created, I can't, what was the number we were looking at when we were back?
Sure, we ended up making a payment of $12 million just for a couple months of electricity because of the spike in 2021, so things really escalated.
So normally, the way that commodity cost would be under any other script, would just directly be passed on to the customer. It doesn't even flow through operations, it just gets directly billed to the customer. We didn't do that. We, and because we have the ARPA dollars, we've been able to pay down that bubble, I don't know what you call it, that payment, over this three-year period of time. So we've, they'll provide relief against that spike. Now, at some point in, in 2023, we'll have to go back to continue to pay, or, sorry, pass on that commodity cost. Now, we hope we don't hit another one of those big spikes.
That's my other question as far as the market, is it, is it, has it flattened out, or is it still increasing or volatile from what in the past has been?
Sure. I think it's, it's more volatile, but we, we understand it a little better now. We're in a better position to where we've hedged out through a few summers now, so, so that portion of our electricity is at a fixed cost. We like to keep it maybe 20, between 5% and 20% of our supplies on kind of the daily market at any given time. So I'd have to go back and check what it is actually right now, but the, the kind of convergence of factors that happened there was, we had all of our contracts expire at once, or almost all of them expire at once, and the market fell apart. So it was just a terrible set of circumstances. We're now hedged a little more in a, in a progressive fashion where one contract will end one year, the next, the next year, the next, next year. So we had historically tried to do that, it, it just ended up in a very weird circumstance where they all, four of them out of five ended prior to one summer. So we're in a better position today, but, but we're, I mean, it just really supports the concept of generating our own energy because we're, we're able to take a lot of that control back.
Would these projects narrow that, that 5% to 20% of where we buy in the wholesale market? Will these narrow that into maybe 5% to less percent, or?
We think that, so, there's a lot of it depends in here, but we could do up to 100% now, it would just be on, on contract purchases, or we could do 0%. What's most likely, I think, with our, in terms of risk tolerance, is probably shooting for a 5% to 10% window on the market regardless. I don't think we want to size our generators to be able to support 100% of our, our electric load, because then we have all our eggs in that basket. So I think when we walk through these studies and, and walk through the motions here, we'll come to you with a plan of what that might look like. But I think the base concept to take away is that these generators will offset those contracts that are expiring every year.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Council. Any more discussion before we move on to the next presentation? All right, thank you. Next item on our agenda, item to be, is a presentation and to provide direction on the Environmental Sustainability Department budget, including Mesa Climate Action Plan projects from last year and proposed future projects.
Energy and Sustainability. This time, I am joined by Laura Heineman, who's our Deputy Director of Environmental and Sustainability, and Rachel Butler, who is our Management Assistant, too. Want to take a moment, so, a little bit different with environmental, this is a department that I've been in for 20-plus years now, but again, a thank you to the hard-working folks in environmental and sustainability. This group, I think the city manager is the one who presented it the best, when he said this is like a consulting service within the city for environmental regulations and for the sustainability initiatives. Really, this is a small group that works with every department in the city, both from the environmental compliance side and on the sustainability side. So the public purpose of the Environmental Sustainability Department is proactively and responsibly protect and conserve Mesa's environment, natural resources for a resilient, healthy community for all. And I think that for all part is a key component of that public purpose, because it's really making sure it's very inclusive and that the solutions that we're bringing are to the benefit of all of the residents of Mesa. With that, as we look at the priorities and objectives that we have, you will see those, those six priorities match up very well with the Climate Action Plan and the areas, the focus areas that we have within Mesa's Climate Action Plan. One thing that I wanted to point out is that these are not silos that are separate from each other, they're very interrelated to each other. So there's a water-energy nexus. So anytime you're saving water, you are also saving energy, because there's so much energy that goes into producing that drinking water that comes to your home, or the water that then goes to a wastewater treatment plant. At the same time, when you save energy, many times you're saving water, because there's a lot of water that is used in the production of that energy. All of those things then combined can help us with reducing our carbon emissions, which helps us with our air quality, helps us with the urban heat island. So as you can see, all of these things, I just want to make sure it's clear that they're all related to each other, and it's a key component of why we have these focus areas and know that there is crossover between them. So with that, I'll turn over the performance measures to Laura.
Sure, this first performance measure reflects the work done by our environmental team. They really proactively train and make inspections of city facilities to make sure that all of the city Mesa's operations are in compliance with environmental regulations. The orange bar kind of shows how many inspections that we get a year from the regulating agencies, and in 2018, we had a notice of violation issued. We took that very seriously. The environmental team is very proactive about training, doing inspections of facilities to make sure we're in compliance. Recently, they've also built into their employee training existing employees and during the new employee orientation, environmental awareness, and I'm going to call it Mesa Climate Action Plan awareness as well, letting new employees understand what we're doing here at the city of Mesa. The next performance measure reflects sustainability. It's a measure of electrical energy use in all of our operations. So this includes not only the building usage, but also use, energy usage at water reclamation plants, our largest energy users, and also streetlights, everything else that uses electrical energy. So you can see from this chart, the city is making investments in efficiency improvements, both in equipment and processing, and we're using less electrical energy, electricity even though we are growing.
And then with the budget, last fiscal year, we transferred out nearly $600,000 for primarily fleet EV- for primarily fleet EV charging infrastructure. In this current fiscal year and looking ahead to next fiscal year, you see our entire base budget with the addition of a mid-year adjustment for water conservation, for our aggressive zero-scape program to keep up with demand and adding a tiered system.
Mesa is making progress.
I'm sorry, Ms. Duff.
I started talking to Laura a little bit about this air quality. I know, I understand, you know, that we have shared air quality with the metropolitan area. And so it's hard to control what we have going on individually. But I will just mention one of my pet peeves, which are those landscaping blowers, the blowers. Every landscaping company seems to use them. It's almost numbing in Monday mornings in my neighborhood, like you can't even carry conversation, it's so loud, and you can't see across the street because the air quality is so bad. It is moving debris, but it is not eliminating debris. It's just ruining our air quality to move it from here to there. Is there anything that any of the cities are doing, anything we can do to the amount of blowers going on across the whole metropolitan area? It's just a dust cloud. Is there anything we can do? Or is there any discussion about that that we can do to improve our air quality? And I worry for the workers as well because most of them don't wear masks. And even if you did, it's just a cloud of dirt constantly going on.
Yeah, so there has been discussion for, I mentioned I've been here for decades in this department. And even before I was in the department, when the city had first adopted dust ordinance, there was discussions, I can remember going back with Christine Talonka, of outlawing the leaf blowers. And really, it became, it becomes a situation of it's going to require then sweeping of these areas, raking within rock areas that I just think that it was not something from a regional standpoint that the region was getting behind to be able to make everybody switch to those. I do believe that it would be very difficult for Mesa to do that alone because, you know, these landscapers work across in all the different cities. And so I think if there was something that was to be done, it would have to be done on a regional, at least a county-wide basis.
I have an electric blower.
Electric blowers, yeah. If we could even just make that movement from the gas blowers to electric blowers. But yeah, that I know is the host of other problems with keeping them charged all day for the landscaping companies. But it might be at least eliminating a little bit of stuff that's going into our air.
Mesa is making strides to achieve our climate action goals. Carbon neutrality by 2050, 100% renewable energy by 2050, managing our materials to divert 90% from the landfill, and to ensure that we're a climate-ready community. I wanted to just give you an update on the projects that were brought forward last year during the budget process, let you know what's happening before we talk about this upcoming year. The Community Electric Vehicle Adoption Project, you've probably seen the surveys out there. I hope you've participated in them. Ian Lindson is working with a consultant, they're gathering data and information from our community about the availability of electric charging, what the community is looking for, all with the goal of accelerating the adoption of electric vehicles in Mesa. The Flare-to-Fuel Project, Scott gave you a brief update during the last presentation about that. You put funds towards that project.
And we do have a slide after this, that if you just give us, as we get through these projects, there's a slide dedicated to it, and we can talk in detail about both Flare-to-Fuel and Food-to-Energy.
The third bullet point is some energy efficiency projects at city buildings. If you've been to the Mesa Arts Center lately and you've been to the museums or the administration buildings, you have seen the new lighting over there. It's very efficient, and you can see it in the utility bills that energy use at the Mesa Arts Center is going down. And we have some more city projects, more city buildings to do. And the last one is a solar repair project at Red Mountain Ballpark. You may have seen some unusual solar equipment north of the ball fields. Some of those were research and development equipment, and they've begun to fail. That project is scoped, and it's our goal to bring that solar back. So we are preparing for an electric future with electric fleet vehicles, charging access throughout the community as laid out in the Community Adoption Plan. And we're working on a workplace charging policy for employees here at the city of Mesa. One of the tools or one of the ways that we're really moving forward with electric charging here in Mesa is our regional partnerships, both with other government agencies that are working on EV charging, but also the private sector and nonprofits. We're all sharing information, coming up with the best strategies to really transform how we power our vehicles. And all of this is putting us in a very good position, we hope, to be able to take advantage of grant opportunities to really install additional charging here in the city of Mesa.
Can you just quickly go back to the workplace?
Charging, what I've asked the staff to consider is, you know, if employees are driving electric cars to work, is there incentive where we allow them to connect to the city's power source as, you know, incentive for being able to do that? So those are some things we're looking at because we've kind of had to do it one-off, where someone at a fire station says, "I am bringing my electric vehicle, can I charge?" And we're like, "Oh, is that something we can do?" Right now, I'm saying yes because I think it's an incentive. Fortunately, we just have to get a really long extension court in some cases. But we're trying to look at that as a policy across the organization as our way to try to incentivize, motivate opportunity for employees for their personal vehicles when they come to work.
There is considerable interest in such a project. The next slide is an overview of the MCAT projects we're looking at, working on in the upcoming year. The Trees Are Cool Initiative, $1 million, includes both planting projects and hiring an urban forester to assist with those planting projects and creating a healthy forest here in Mesa. And there would be an ongoing cost of $143,000. The Food-to-Energy Project, Flare-to-Fuel has been successful. It's underway, and there's interest in going to the next phase of that. And that's designing the Food-to-Energy Project. Scott will talk about that. A lighting project, you know, you've got to stick with the traditional projects that really just reduce energy use and use it more efficiently. And that's a Red Mountain Sports Complex. You've seen a lot of work happening out there. This would be to replace the existing fixtures that exist on the ball fields, the softball fields and the baseball fields, with new LED lighting. I'll talk about that in a minute. And then Water Use It Wisely is our regional water conservation campaign, putting some additional money this year, $100,000. And then last is a biomass agreement. So Trees Are Cool, 1 million trees by 2050. It's a big, bold, audacious goal, but it's just, it's been amazing how the community has responded to this initiative, from students to residents, from corporations to small local businesses. Everybody wants to be a part of this because they feel they can do it. You know, no matter where you live. I was asked recently, "What do I do if I don't own my home?" Well, participate in a school planting project, a project at your church. There's just lots of things that people can do. Trees are beneficial for climate action in so many ways. The mayor did a nice job talking about that at the State of City. They not only reduce heat, but they improve air quality, which Councilmember Duff was just talking about. They absorb carbon, they release oxygen. And people probably don't understand how important they are to the water cycle. The roots absorb water, the leaves release water, and all of that is a very important part of the water cycle. And we care a lot about water here. The next, so what are we going to do with this $1 million for trees? We would like to plant, 750,000 of that will be spent on planting new trees in our city parks throughout the city, in all neighborhoods, at city buildings where people gather, and then at our transit centers. They will be able to plant about 1,200 new trees with that funding. We're going to spend $150,000 on Tree in Shade program events, very similar to what SRP does with their Tree in Shade programs. Our intention is to conduct two of those programs in the Energy Resources District. So we'll provide education for people, we'll show them where to plant it to maximize the shade on their house and reduce the energy use, and then how to care for that tree after it's planted. We'll also hold two Tree in Shade programs outside the Energy Resources District, coordinating with SRP so that we can distribute those events throughout the year and throughout the city. And then lastly, the urban forester that I mentioned. That urban forester, it's just so important to have somebody who's a technical expert in trees and healthy urban forests. This individual will assess our community, figure out and manage these tree planting projects that we're bringing onboard, assist the community put together tree planting programs, and just make sure that we maintain a healthy forest moving forward.
Yes, Ms. Duff.
I can't go by trees without like making a comment, you know? Beyond trees, I appreciate that we have the Million Trees Initiative. And I know some cities are also talking about a percentage of tree canopy, and we have a number of trees. I don't know if we really have a preference one way or another. But do we have a shade goal? Some places it's not advisable to have trees for a variety of reasons. But if we can achieve shade, it still helps lower our, help us with our heat mitigation.
You're asking a terrific question, making a wonderful comment. So the million seems like a round number, but it's actually based in science. There was an organization, American Forest, that conducted a canopy study, very high level of the tree canopy in the city of Mesa, and it's roughly 6%. The Nature Conservancy did a study based on this part of the desert southwest in our region. It made sense to be 15,000, I mean, I'm sorry, 15% coverage. So to move from 6% to 15% based on our basic square mileage of the city, it does end up to be very close to a million trees. So there is science behind that number.
I consulted it, you would think we just threw that number out.
I thought, like, other people are doing it. We'll do that, too. But no, I'm impressed. Thank you.
So that was a great question. The other question you asked is you can't plant trees everywhere. And that's why I really think that 15% is realistic here. We have a lot of open space where trees just don't make sense. But we need to think about shade structures. And so we will be looking at, as we move on. How do you, we know how different it means to stand under an overhang versus not during many months of the year. So it's really trying to keep our community as healthy.
Can we transfer those goals also into our planning and zoning ordinances? Or something like that, an encouraging development to participate in a certain percentage? Yeah, people are like, "Oh, stop." Anyway, I know I'm getting outside of the budget, so I'll just leave it at that. And we're running short on time. And then the last comment is on all the tree planting, that somehow we do the bio swells or somehow of capturing the rainwater in order to, so these trees can grow appropriately and quickly, having the deep saturation by capturing the rainwater sufficiently.
I do want to just underline what Jen just said, that we need to take this seriously. This is not just a feel-good program to get from 6% canopy to a good goal of 15% is a million trees. So it's not, are we going to make that? Boy, I sure hope so. But we need to come, we need to plant a lot more trees. If we're just planting 1,100 more trees a year as a city, I think that's kind of what our budget is for this particular program. It'll only take us, I think, 909 years to reach that goal. So that's obviously not the, you know, the level of urgency that we ought to apply to this goal. And so thank you for making the point that we need to find ways to engage the whole community and raise the, you know, put a brighter spotlight on this goal.
Yes, and more to come on that. We really have taken this initiative to heart, and we understand the horizon and the impact. I want, we are planting trees, and not all of these are, I will just, I won't read every bullet point on this slide, but I think it's really exciting. Last Saturday, we had a tree planting event in the Living Green Village, and that was really fun to involve the community in the planting of the tree. After this meeting, we're going to be upstairs with that Arbor Day proclamation, which the city has made for many, many years. The city of Mesa has been committed to the Tree City USA program, the Arbor Day program. We also have what's turning into a wonderful Arbor Day tree planting event at Skyline Park. Skyline Park is next to Skyline High School, involving the students, volunteers from Shutterfly and Boeing, also a local nonprofit, Arizona Sustainability Alliance, with this very ambitious goal of planting 20 trees in that park. Planting the 1 million trees is going to take partnerships, and we are building and establishing strong partnerships. Corporate volunteers and donors, nonprofit organizations, nursery and contractors, so that we are growing the right kind of tree in the right number. And then the contractors who will take care of those trees to make sure they live a full life and grow to full size. And then, of course, also just learning from our counterparts in other cities what works and what doesn't, and how do you do this well.
Okay, so.
Sorry, can I ask one question?
Sure.
What, so you said for the southwest, 15% coverage is the goal? Okay, I just want to make sure.
So when you look at tree initiatives throughout the country, there are certain parts, like the eastern United States, where they are way up at 60 and 80%. That just doesn't make sense for the desert southwest. We all love that beautiful desert that we go hiking in. But you'll notice, it's not a continuous tree canopy. So what makes sense for here, for our climate and for where we are? And that's where the 15%, and that could be adjusted over time as we do more research.
Next is the Food-to-Energy. So we'll talk about both Flare-to-Fuel. So we chatted a little bit. So if you look at the graph on the right there, from the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant, that photo, and you follow the circle, the bottom part of the circle, we're going to be producing renewable natural gas that is coming from the digesters today and the existing municipal sewage that goes there. That gas will go into the natural gas utility and will be used to fuel the solid waste vehicles that are running on CNG. So the final, the GMP number two is coming to council May 1st, which will include the last. So GMP 1 was the long-lead items, especially the treatment equipment that's being specially built for this project. So that was done last year. Now, we'll be going with GMP 2, will be the rest of the construction needs and equipment along with the actual, you know, cost of constructing this. And then we have funding, the $1.8 million is to now start up at the businesses and close that loop down to the Northwest Plant. So the $1.8 million is to begin the design of a food processing facility. So we had done feasibility study previously with Food-to-Energy. The idea is to collect this food waste from businesses, process it at the Center Street Yard, and it turns into a bio slurry. Looks kind of like hummus by the time it's done, it gets ground up. And then we would feed that into the anaerobic digesters, and it will significantly increase potential of doubling the amount of renewable natural gas that's being generated at the Northwest Plant. And then with that bottom part of the circle, it's being sized appropriately. So then all of that gas will be able to go into our natural gas system and be used by the solid waste vehicles. So this is a project that helps to meet all three of the aspirational goals associated with the Climate Action Plan. It reduces the amount of waste going to the landfill, it increases the production of renewable energy, and it also decreases our carbon intensity. So we're excited about this project and the next, both the existing phase that we're completing and going into the next phase.
I have a quick question, and I know Ms. Duff does, too. I remember the demonstration project and watching folks process, you know, the leftover food. And it's, it's an interesting process. But I mean, are you going to create? But, I mean, are you going to create this hummus, for lack of a better word, and, and just augment what's already going on in the digesters? Or will you say, "Oh, today's Tuesday, we're running food today, and then on Thursday we'll go back to, you know, water treatment," or mechanically, how does that work? Because we only have so many digesters, right?
Right, so we have two digesters at the Northwest Plant, and I want to be clear, because our Water Resources folks make sure that I'm clear on this, it has to first be a wastewater treatment plant. That is what it's built for, it has flows that will go to it every single day, and it needs to be able to operate as a wastewater treatment plant. What they do have at the Northwest Plant, what we do have is some stranded capacity, so it was, it was built to a size that we don't see those flows getting to the maximum amount of flows that go to the Northwest Plant. So with that stranded capacity, what it does is it gives us an ability to load in, because what goes into the digesters is the organic material. So it's not the water necessarily that's in there, it's the organic material. So what we will do is we will feed that bio slurry into the digesters. Through our feasibility study, one of the things that we learned, and our wastewater folks will agree with this, is that those digesters like consistency. So we will have deliveries that are coming to the Center Street Yard, probably five days a week, and we will deliver it to Northwest in a tanker truck. It'll be stored into a vessel that will then bleed off at a constant rate into those digesters, so that we maintain that steady state that those digesters like to be in.
So you'll just augment what's already happening with food waste?
Yeah, it's just adding more organic material to the digesters, and with that organic material, more gas will be produced.
That's great. I think, you know, the whole, if this, if we get good at this, every wastewater treatment plant in the United States or the world will want to come here and see how to do this.
Yeah, there are, so we'll be the first, I believe, when we finish, the first in the state that will be putting in food waste. But there are many places in California with the regulations that they have in place, with organics not being able to be landfilled, that are currently doing this as we speak. As part of the feasibility study, as a matter of fact, we did go visit both Southern California and Northern California with our wastewater group and with our natural gas group. The one thing that all the cities or others who deal with this, they are envious of, is that we own all of those utilities. All of that happens within that circle without leaving the City of Mesa, without leaving the departments that we have already here at the city. That's what uniquely positions us to be able to do these types of projects.
That's great. Ms. Duff.
It was just a quick comment of, could you take on the organics collection, excess citrus? I know a lot of people have, like, what are we going to do with all the citrus? You only can give it away so much. To collect that maybe with households, I don't know if it's a useful type of food that can be made into the bio?
It is one of the things we have to be careful of, and it may even sound funny, but through the feasibility study, those digesters like a balanced diet. So a mixture of proteins and carbohydrates and fats, it may sound funny, but it's very similar to ourselves, that that's what they like. So what we have to be careful of is that we're not overloading, and that's why you go through that processing. So the two things are contaminants, so any sort of glass or rocks or things that would then not be able to be digested in the digesters, but also making sure that you're really providing a nice, healthy diet to the, to the microorganisms that are there.
The bugs, you've got to keep the bugs alive.
We do. They are a key component to all of this. They make the methane.
So Scott, this is a question for you. Does the quality of gas go, get better with the digester using the food products? Because I know the quality of gas changes.
Yeah, we did not really see a change in the quality of the gas. That's what, so there are other projects that you see that are landfill gas projects, that's another place where renewable natural gas comes from. They tend to have more fluctuation just because of everything that is being added into the landfill, whereas digester gas tends to be very, again, steady state. That's the best way to operate these plants, is in a very steady state, and that's what we found through our feasibility study.
Yeah, I toured a large digester in Hila Band, and the quality of gas that they were producing was at a higher level than what Southwest Gas was really wanting, so it was even better for them, and it was transported to California, and California just loved the higher quality of gas. So that's the reason I'm asking the question.
Okay.
The, we're requesting $2.1 million for a, the first phase of a two-phase lighting project out at the Red Mountain Sports Complex. You've seen a lot of development going on out there with the new sports fields. This project will replace the existing lighting at the existing ball fields, specifically the baseball and softball fields, with LED lighting, taking advantage of some new technology and efficient bulbs. It would also improve the quality of light out there and reduce glare. So it's a traditional energy efficiency project, but it needs to be done. This is, I'm going to talk a little bit about a water conservation program that will roll into our request for funding for Water Use It Wisely. The water conservation team works on programming, and they also work on messaging. Their programming, they do traditional grass-to-zero-scape program and irrigation incentives for non-residential customers. They are also working on new programming that strategically meets or encourages large water users to reduce their water use. And one of those is we piloted a software that allows a water customer to take a look at their water use for large irrigation tracks. There's so many things that affect irrigation, you know, whether it's the type of plant, the heat, the rainfall, the wind, and this water budget software allows them to have a dashboard to take a look at, to see whether they're irrigating within the right amount and reduce water waste. So we are planning to rule that out in the next year to our HOAs that have large tracts of land, often as large as our own city parks. So what will allow the HOAs to monitor their water use, much as the Parks Group has. You've probably also noticed over the last year, as there's been more talk about water scarcity and the availability of water, we've really amplified our messaging for our customers. One thing that they've done that I think is very good is they are consistently updating the My Utility Portal with links to information, so that when a customer goes on to and takes a look at their water bill, they, very close, they can go to links to find out ways to save water. So it's really helping people, I think it's great customer service. They are part of a regional partnership called Water Use It Wisely, and I'll talk about that next. So saving water in Mesa, saving water in Phoenix, saving water in Scottsdale, many of the strategies are the same. So back in 1999, Mesa kicked off this region, the idea of a regional campaign. The name of the campaign itself is the Call to Action, Water Use It Wisely. So what we are proposing, or how we plan to spend this $100,000 for Water Use It Wisely, 80,000 of that will go to what we call the base budget for Water Use It Wisely. That will allow them to come up with different mass media tactics with the goal of reaching a broader, more diverse audience. 20,000 of that will go to a Know Your Numbers campaign, because you can't save water if you don't know what you're using and if it's the right, or, you know, it's an appropriate amount for your household. That will be co-branded between Water Use It Wisely and Mesa. And I did want to highlight the fact that when Mesa's Facebook Espanol said that they wanted to do messaging on water conservation to our Spanish-speaking community, Water Use It Wisely took it upon themselves to translate that site into Spanish. So Mesa really moved the ball forward on that one.
And then the last project that we had that was part of the Climate Action Plan funding is the Bio Mass Agreement that I said was discussed previously with Water Resources. So with that, we can take any other questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Counsel, any questions? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate the good work you're doing. Next item on our agenda is current events and conferences attended. Counsel members, I know you've been busy, who'd like to go first? Ms. Spillsbury?
Yeah, just quickly, Saturday, Celebrate Mesa, Councilmember Duff and Freeman, I don't know if anyone else showed up after we were there, but we got to throw shirts out at the stage, and we went around and visited all the department's booths, and it's such an amazing event, and I loved seeing everyone out there. So big shout out to Parks and Rec and everyone else that had anything to do with that event. And then today, we, Councilmember Go-Forth, Duff, and I were invited to do a panel for Women Leading Mesa event at lunch, and talk about our experience on council and empowering women and all of those fun things, so I really enjoyed doing that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
All right, I'll jump in. So I misspoke last council meeting that I was going to have a safety fair yesterday, or Saturday. Well, my gosh, it was a busy day. I think there was only small, one small part of Pioneer Park that was not being utilized, Mr. Brady. That was the northeast corner, I'm very disappointed. It was like, just a small little
Standing northeast corner, there was a
I know, but the very northeast corner. What I'm saying is, the park was fully utilized, except this one little place, if you wanted to go
Axe-throwing place?
It was just to the north of it, the Axe-throwing place.
Axe-throwing, that was kind of fun.
Yeah, it was. So, hey, this Saturday at St. Luke's at 8th Street and, 8th Street and Staple, we'll have a safety fair from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m., or 10:00 a.m., and we're giving away free trees.
Oh.
Yeah, St. Luke's Church at Staple and 8th Street. So we're going to have pancakes and all the city departments there, so ahead of time, thank you city departments for facilitating that. But you have to participate in a survey to get your tree, your transportation and general plan survey. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Duff, you want to talk about the Mesa Music Festival, don't you?
I do. It was, the Mesa Music Festival was from Thursday night, was a little kickoff with a keynote and some receptions, then going into Friday night and most of the day Saturday. There was over 200 artists out there, and some of the groups were from Mesa, the Cardinal Kids, which did the We Walk Commissioned song about Mesa, and the Modern, I believe, is that the one, we were talking, we took some pictures with them, and the mayor showed up and from our, they went to our local high schools. So it's wonderful to see some of the many groups out there are from Mesa, as well as we had Everclear, and that was quite a treat. So it was a big night for Mesa. All downtown was just jammed, every sidewalk and restaurant, breweries, and every place was just jammed, so it was a very successful turnout, and we look forward to making it even more so next year. I will mention that Councilmember Spillsbury and Go-Forth, we did do, participate in a We Walk music video filming on Friday morning, and that music video that, for the We Walk, written for Mesa, will be, I think the release is in early May through Visit Mesa. It's a really cool song, so we'll watch for that to be on media. Friday night, I also attended the Project Lit reception and performance, it's a spoken word, a high school student doing poetry in spoken word. Very touching, I love the program, and thank you to Tomas and the many others involved in that, and sponsors who support that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, then, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor, we'll see you Thursday, we have four more presentations for budget.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Ms. Spillsbury, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.